Public work session on our strategic plan number four. Mr. Keith, we're all.
Well, and you just said that this is, we continue with the strategic plan of number four. And we want to welcome Adam from Barkhamville, Billama. And he's just going to share some information about some of our planning. So I don't know if there's anything else we want to say, Dr. Keen or anybody, but we'll just turn it over to Adam.
All right. Well, thank you. Christian, nice to meet you. So a little bit of quick background. See, Todd, I mentioned, I looked before I came, the last time we did this in a work session was just over a year ago. I think at that time, we had more than just kind of two options. We went through a bunch. It was another year before that, I think, where we had kind of the initial conversations. So since then, we've met a few times, a smaller group. A lot of things have changed. The market's changed quite a bit, so we wanted to update some things for that. We've knocked off some building projects at some of the buildings, some roofing, metros, getting the restrooms renovated. So we took some of that off the scope. So those are some of the updates. But also, we had initially started out as the discussion was to bring up buildings to a light new condition, which we dropped a year ago at the last study. Not like new, just what would we need to do to really invest in them and keep them going. So that was one change that I just wanted to bring up. There's a lot of history on the studies and where we've been. So at our last smaller group meeting, we kind of honed in on these two options that I'm presenting and showing you now. That's the current spreadsheet. And that is, option one is to basically keep all your buildings and grades, everything like it is now. Just do the work that needs to be done at the buildings, not drastically add anything to them. Just, you know, do the work that needs to keep them up to date. And then option two is the new high school thought. And along with that would be some work at a couple of the other buildings. You wouldn't have to invest that much in all of them because over a few years, you know, some might go to other uses or not be needed as much. But there is some work that you would still need in some of the other buildings, even with the new building. It's not just the new building. So that's kind of the quick update of where we were. As far as the market goes, the last time, just over a year ago, we didn't have an escalation number in this. It was kind of teetering on, I mean, it was escalating, but it wasn't to where we were projecting that far out. There's 7% on there now on top of our normal 10% design contingency. That 7% is based on 12 months. And that's pretty much where we see in the market. A lot of contractors we do business with, that's kind of where they're at too in estimating. So we feel good about that number. A few months before that, it was about 12%. But 7% now for 12 months is our best guess. That's where we think it would be. So that number's on there as well. So those are kind of the quicker updates. So the summary page there, you can kind of see the big picture. And again, this is all kind of 30,000-foot elevation, trying to program out, forecast a little bit in the future where you might want to go with our small group conversations that we've had. And then doing our best to kind of put numbers to the scope. So option one, like I said, is to keep everything the same, your current layout, your current grade organization, all your buildings. And so that comes in just over $60 million with the contingencies and things I talked about. And we'll dive into the detail. Option two then is the new 912 high school. But then also turning North and Southwood, Northfield and Southwood into pre-K. K and K, part of that means some restroom renovations within existing space to make those pre-K and K rooms. That's part of the scope that was added to those buildings to do that, along with some other that we'll get into. And then also keeping central office and the transportation buildings here with some renovation, but keeping them here. With the new campus, you could always look to move them in the future. But as far as this estimate, what this scope is, we kept them here. So that's the big, quick summary. I know some of you have seen us more than others. I don't intend to go through every line item, but I do want to hit some highlights for each building and for each option. Just any questions along the way? Don't save them till the end. Let me know, I'll try to answer them as we go. So option one, keep things the same. Metro North's pre-K room, two building, needs general renovations, like we've done to some of the schools. Still would add on a secure vestibule addition, renovate the office. There's some asphalt work and then maintenance work, windows, doors, hardware, playgrounds. Keep existing and add a new playground, mechanical, including erasing the gym, it needs a new chiller. So those, most of that has been on the list. Like I said, I dropped off the restrooms that we're finishing now, halfway through now, since that work is being done. So I did update all that.
And that keeps, that keeps everything pretty much as is, with no new additions. Even though we've still struggled with having the cafeteria and gym space being used for the same, for different purposes.
Correct, yeah.
At the same time.
Yeah, in option one, there's no major additions at any of the buildings. It's, yeah, upgrading. So yeah, any functional issue like the gym issue or the athletic or cafeteria and gym space, any of those functional things would still exist in this option. We have looked at all those other options of adding on. Those are various versions of these. We do have those, but for the sake of tonight, we kind of reduced it down to these two to talk about.
That's been one of the big issues this raised at Metro North, right Chris? The lunchroom and the shifting of the, does that improve with the little stand there or it's worse?
It doesn't help. I mean, it's all, a lot of it's dictated off of the schedule because they share specialist teachers between the two buildings. And so they can't have gym in there when it's lunchtime.
And also breakfast is something, breakfast is stuff that they tear down. They do lunch and they tear it down.
So it does become an issue as far as spacing is concerned. Because they ate as early, I think, as 10:45 for lunch because that's one where you could fit it in the schedule.
And that's the reason why they moved those classes up? That's how I choose it, either 10:30 or 10:45.
Maybe, maybe move up what?
They moved the times up because that's the only way it would work out. Right, 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 right. I thought it was maybe because that's how we had to start that early to get that many kids through by a certain amount of time.
And then when you try to have programs or even events there, it's not conducive to having those because of the space.
To do it right, we build cafeteria space or build gym space, just?
To do it right, I would probably think that we would add gym space and use some of that current space that's there for the kitchen.
So yeah, we do have all those various options, but for the sake of tonight, it was kind of simplified. And that's more, that's true for more than just Metro, for, you know, getting into that other kind of options.
Sharp Creek and Southwood.
So then in this scheme, moving on to Sharp Creek, you'll see some things repeating, you know, the general building renovations. And those go for the square footage that you need. So like in the next option, some of the numbers change because you wouldn't necessarily need to renovate a lot of some buildings. So the secure offices, things like asphalt windows, those things will repeat. There's some more roofing, quite a bit of roofing at Sharp Creek that would need to be done. Quite a bit of mechanical work there as well that would need to be done, and that's trickier work at that building. So that's the, those are kind of the other highlights besides the repetitive renovation.
When you talked about some of that, especially the mechanical side of things, I think, oh, this would have been four, four years ago, four or five years ago. Performance Services had kind of previewed us on some of our elementary buildings because they had finished up those energy savings projects of high school. And at Sharp Creek Elementary, they really highlighted the fact that a lot of that mechanical stuff was past its life cycle. And so Steve could probably talk more to that when it comes to the mechanical side. About the necessity in that building is going to be very important on the mechanical side of things.
That number would be all HBA C now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Creating the tunnel, basically, unitments, floor replacement.
Units in each classroom?
Yeah.
And exterior walls?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the tunnels, maybe we're good on day one, but I don't know, probably, you know, it's pretty challenging to keep those updated, keep it, you know, in good shape, so. There's more ways to slice it, but that's what we looked at just over a year ago. He kind of did some more detail estimates on just that and just the roofing part of it. So that's where this came from. Anything else on Sharp Creek?
Window replacement, seems that, seems like it's economical.
I hope I have a count right, if that's the case.
Because those are, are they have Steve saying the same windows? I'd heard when we visited on the K and.
Yeah, took that simple.
I don't mean for you to question yourself, Adam, and you just look at the windows aren't cheap.
Yeah, and part, I mean, part of where we're at too on things like this, that 10% design contingency that's there is for, let's say I estimated 25 windows and there's 35, things like that that might get caught along the way. So I'm not, I don't have the numbers or floor plan with me or I'm happy to verify that, but that certainly could be possible. Okay, Northfield. So the building renovation there or the rest of the areas that we have not touched with the 19 project. That one has a larger secure office addition and renovation. We had looked on a plan, it's probably been 10 years ago, to kind of infill a little bit of the courtyard next to the office and create a secure entry. There's lots of ways to slice it. Again, you could take over classroom space, but for the sake of the study, we just updated the numbers from that plan that we had already done for you a few years back. Asphalt again, some masonry, some of that work's been done, so this allowance isn't very big. So there's been some stuff done along the way here. The EFS that's on the building needs some repair work. And then similar renovations. Also includes new tennis courts, new football stadium turf, softball and baseball. And then also a new kind of ticket booth, football entrance piece, along with a new generator, a generator. And new main panel gear. So most of those items were what we've had on the list along what you've seen before, just with some updates. Southwood L, similar scope as far as renovations to the cafeteria, the remaining parts of the building that you're using. Adding a small secure vestibule, and then again exterior asphalt. We're adding a parking lot there, a small parking lot in the front. And then similar renovations with the windows, doors, restrooms, and some more roofing there. There's a fair amount of roofing in that building that would need to be done as well. Mechanical renovation there as well. I don't think in this scheme, any of that has changed since the last time, except that some of the numbers.
On the roof replacement, they're adding that 600. If that piece were done, then that most of it has life then.
With, oh, with that amount done, yes, absolutely. There's actually only a small portion of that that's not included in this, all the way to the north. North and east, I believe it is, there's a small six or eight classroom portion that wasn't included in this because it was newer. But yeah, this is most of the building.
That's most of the building.
Then at Southwood, junior, senior high. Essentially is the same scope as Northfield. Trying to see actually if there's any exceptions to that because they basically had, you know, twin work done for every project. Looks like it is the same scope.
Yeah, I think the big difference there is just the gym floor. That was never replaced.
Is that on this list?
Never replaced at Northfield.
Which one is this? I don't see it on this.
See if the number of the buildings is the same. The building renovation number is larger than, than North.
Yeah, it says right here, both gyms.
Yeah, there's, thank you, yep.
Thank you.
So it's not as a separate line item, but it's in that top line item. So that's why that's a larger dollar. And then this building and the transportation building, like we have before, a small addition to this building. And then a larger whole barn as a storage building, transportation.
Current conditions of shop out here.
Where would we put it out there?
We would attach it.
To that?
Yeah.
40 by 60, that's going to be that.
Well, we also have that, we own that building that we can.
Yeah, we also own the lane right behind it too. The barn sits on currently that we're probably going to have to tear down here pretty soon, so. And right now, it's not being used for anything.
We had a tractor in there, but that was sold with the auction.
Yeah, we haven't done any sort of layout for that. It's kind of this big picture, this size building.
Adam, before you go on, I don't know if you're ready to go on. I do want to point out, not a question, but I just want to point out too that, you know, we continue to talk about the SP number four, strategic plan number four. And so one thing I just want to remind is that, you know, it's facilities and technology provide safe and efficient learning environment. So the objective for us is optimize utilization and determine feasibility of current facilities and other possibilities. And when you think about this and this plan, obviously, doing the first one that you talked about, Adam, will provide efficiencies of the actual physical plant. But it does not change the fact that we would have five schools and the number of students that we have in certain buildings. And so I guess that's one thing I just want to point out, that part of our strategic plan was to do a study and look at that. But it's not utilization of facilities because of the critical mass of students that we have. So just want to point that out when we look at that, so. If that makes sense, I think that's fair.
Anything else?
Before we move on, I want to make sure, I mean, I've looked at all this kind of, if we would do the new, you know, high school, you would still have to do, I mean, we got additional, but we still have to do the high school of Southwood. And we're going to do this, what you were talking about, plus the additional?
Not to that degree, no.
Okay, okay.
Because actually, yeah, that would be taken off and actually you already have the other cost.
Well, see, the next, he's got seven, I just didn't know if we'd be adding that plus this.
No, 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 no. Good question, good question.
This, I want to make sure I'm correct.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm going to point too to our picture there, the left, for most of me, I guess, the right to 10.
You're in that one or what?
County father.
That was great. So 1959, so obviously they're, they were thinking about the same thing, I'm sure, as far as the efficiencies and things like that because of all the, all the township schools that we had. So I always go back to that because I look at that like, okay, where are we at in our present environment right now? And that's what I look at, so.
Now 60 years ago.
Over, over 60 years ago. So we're still trying with priority number four, the facilities and technology and being efficient. We're trying to see how can we be more viable for the next 60 years plus maybe. I, that was actually a little plus too, so 60 plus years, so. We do still have some of the chairs though that were in the picture, by the way, so they're out there.
And Christian, with, I guess to your point with the question about these numbers, yeah, the intent is that one option has all the scope within that option. We've done a whole bunch of different versions of this, just like Chris mentioned, adding a gym here or there, those things. So there's always those options and anything in between. But I guess what we are asked to bring were just these two tonight to go through. But yeah, the intent is that in that second option, that's the option.
Okay.
So yeah, I don't expect you to add from other.
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of what I figured, but.
Yeah.
It's want to make sure.
Some salesman will do that for you.
Exactly. By the way, you go after this.
Forgot to mention.
Nope, there's no catch or anything. But option two has the buildings that we'll go through with the new building. But it also has some things that I pulled out of that as talking points, things, cost savings, whatever you want to call it. Because as, during our discussions, we talked about, well, what if we don't do this? What if we do this? So I, yeah, but I just wanted to start with that, that it's not, this isn't an all-inclusive list where it's all added up. There's options within that. So the first part of option two is the new building. And you'll see there on the left, 165,000 square feet. Now where this comes from, there's nothing designed, we don't have a floor plan, we don't have anything that's done. That would be very ahead of the game. So again, this is a 30,000 kind of foot view. Your existing high schools are about 138,000 square feet, just for reference. So the way that we got to this was looking at your programmatic needs, you know, the courses that you offer. We went through a lot of, that's programming, we call that programming. Went through a lot of meetings with Tim and the kind of the small group to pin down, what do you, what do you have? What do you foresee in the future that you'll have? How many rooms does that need? How many square feet are in the room? And that gets us down to a program of spaces that says, all right, you need 100, let's say 20,000 square feet of building. Well, on top of that, you need walls, you need janitor's closets, you need other space to physically make the building work. So that's a multiplier that we add on top of the program. Once we did that, it was actually quite a bit larger than this 165. We did a very loose conceptual, all right, here's a group of classrooms, here's a gym, here's a field house. Just to prove that the program would work, that. And that's why I don't have it here, it's not a design to show you. It's just to prove that the math works. That's where we got to the 165 that we feel good about showing you. In any, in any design, in any building, as you would go forward, you know, the goal is always to make it efficient. Always to, you know, first dollars and long-term dollars to make it efficient. But we feel that starting off with that number, that square footage would be a good place and a comfortable place to design this sort of building.
Look, Adam, what did you say, the combined total of what the Southwood would be right now?
Each building's about 138,000 square feet.
Each one?
Yeah, they're basically twins. Yeah, so 100, yeah, round it to 140.
That would include the auditorium, gym, all of that?
Yes, yep, the oxygen. Yes, yep, yep. I mean, one main difference between what you currently have and, let's say, a new, a new design for a school is we would typically start off with a typical classroom being 900 square feet. You're building, most of them are lower than that, 800, somewhere in the 700s. So that's just one quick example of starting from scratch, not thinking of anything, but comparing it to what you're used to. And some rooms could very well be under 900, some rooms need it a little larger. But as a place to start, we would start at 900. And you'll see an option where we reduce the square footage below that for a classroom, just as a talking point. But that's, you know, one thing, when you're trying to compare existing to building new, that's just one quick way to kind of think about it.
I'm curious, are there state guidelines, you have to have something square feet close to?
Not for a typical classroom like that. I mean, there are other guidelines for pre-K and things like that, but for, it's more functional for a typical, like, high school classroom. Class size and, you know, what you're doing. Science is much different than business classroom, you know, things like that.
Does 165,000 have a launch to move for growth through?
Yeah, so that's totally based on the design of, yeah, if we, let's say we don't build a field house on day one, can we design the building in such a way that it's very simple and economical to add it? Or we might need 10 classrooms in the future, how do we design it? So that, that's just part of laying it out and, you know, having a smart design to give you room. Yeah, and the amount of land, you know, that's potentially there, you don't foresee any issues with that, to be able to design a building for all the future needs.
Talking about acreage, you say the acreage we're looking at, how much do you foresee like this taking up?
Really hard to say quickly, I mean, it depends on if you, so the very basic thing that we just laid out had a bit of a two-story classroom piece. If you do that, you know, you have a smaller footprint of building, which always helps you for the future. A lot of schools just go totally one-story, which would take a little more ground. It depends too on, you know, parking and how we divide up where the buses come in and students and parents and where the stadium goes and, you know, all the athletic fields. So it's pretty hard to say, just shoot from the hip. But we're very comfortable with the amount we have.
Whatever those, those are like.
I wanted, is that, I think I'm close, I think, I think I'm close.
Obviously, we're not going to be much more than what those are.
We're better, yeah.
Especially if you put two stories.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, and very different proportions of land, but, but yeah, we don't feel, we don't feel like it would be.
We got plenty ready for future expansion, for more future expansion.
Is there economics to two stories or not?
There is for a classroom repetitive type block, there is. You know, all your other, the big gym spaces and band and auditorium, the tall stuff doesn't really do much for you. You're paying for stairs and an elevator, but if you can stack and get those things, you know, basically replicated to some extent, it can be very economical to do that. With the amount of square footage we're talking to the size of the building, it might be, it might be close to a wash, one story versus the two, but the two does give you more flexibility for just overall space and land.
Aesthetically, does it change anything with designs and things like that or?
It does, some people, you know, go both ways on it. Some people really like, you know, a two-story, you know, classroom block. Some people prefer something more broken, spread out. There's a lot that goes with that, a lot of it's preference.
Any impact on roofing?
I think it would.
There is, so, yeah, so. So low slope roofing. Never flat. But yeah, so, so a slope roof, a pitch roof, a metal roof, you don't want a big wide area. You end up with massive volume of space that's nothing. You could have, you know, 40, 50 foot of attic space that's just, just up there with nothing going on. So yeah, for a slope roof, you want to keep things narrower. So a classroom wing is very easy to do that with. You get into a big wide space, gym and field house, plus if there's things on the side, might be a little harder to do that with. So most buildings that have some, most schools, I should say, that have slope roof, do have some flat pieces here and there for some of those big areas. But again, that all goes to design. So on day one, we absolutely want as much slope roof as we can get, great, we know that, we can start to lay it out for that. You know, if you design a building that's, that's very, let's say it's a big rectangle and has everything you need, but if it's 200 by 300, now you want a slope roof, that's not going to look very good. You know, it's not going to, not going to work so well. So it all goes back to design and your goals. So yeah, on day one, if that's what we know you want, that's, we can definitely provide that and lay it out that way. So the pieces and parts of this, you can see the general high school number, and that's the square footage of the building, including all of the programmatic spaces, you know, the music spaces and auditorium, gym, field house, all the things we talked about. Times a multiplier, cost per square foot, which nowadays, we're estimating 300 bucks a square foot. When we started this, we were 260, a year ago, we were 280, now it's 300 a square foot. And that seems to be what people are estimating at. Now, not all projects are equal, you know, some small additions somewhere might not be the same. But for where we are at this level, we feel comfortable with that number. So that's what it's based on, I just wanted you to know that for sure.
This is a question that goes back to when we, we were considering programming and stuff, how many students are we looking at?
Well, we have the combined total of your current schools, it would have been a year ago.
I think this was, I think we were around 550 to 600.
For the, six, yeah, 600, I think, for the, for the nine to 12.
600.
So 600 would be about 150 a class, and right now, we're probably close to averaging 130, 130 plus. There's an outlier there, but I hope they're not.
The only thing in the program that was really extra, we got one extra future classroom, whatever you would like to call it, in there. That's the only, I just want to say extra, I guess the only extra type space. Yeah, it's not a building design, you know, with 12 extra classrooms, empty classrooms or anything. It's an efficient kind of for your needs. And again, that, that 165 is still pretty generic at this point. If it was to go ahead, the whole goal is always keep it, what do you need? Keep it efficient, make sure we meet all your goals, and not have a bunch of fluff in there and a bunch of extra that you don't need on day one, but design it to where if you need it, you can easily add it.
I think that gives us a lot of flexibility in the long term too. If it were to continue to decline, then, you know, we would have space for, we mean, our eighth graders or seventh graders over kind of our setup now, if it was growing, and we would have flexibility in the long term to maybe add on spaces if we need to add.
And since Mike brought up the soft things about the building in the last round, I'll bring it up here. We've had people ask about programming and how this might impact it. We, I sat with Mike and did a comparison, is that all right? Sure, sure. We compared ourselves to two schools near us. And our offerings are just on par. Like, I mean, you don't, we don't look any different than the other schools around. The real one, of course, is what we offer and what we actually schedule is not the same. And what a kid can fit in their schedule is not the same. So we may offer AP Environmental Science, but when two kids sign up for it, then it's going to line up at the same time as AP Chemistry. And so they're going to.
And so they're going to have, the choices become smaller. And so our offerings are very comparable, but what we actually get may be a little bit tighter.